I could go downstairs and just out make sure that's what she's gonna do.
They all came up, they all came through the front door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From what I can see, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight. Now, what's going on is I was thinking about Willie May Bond, you know, back in Chicago, you still need Big Hill. And I heard he ran to a good name, Big Live, Big Live wanted to fight Little Live, and there was a lot of stuff going on. Hey, it's got nothing to do with the real thing. We're talking about Buddy Guy, Old Haulin', Smoke Stack, Lightning Whoop. That dog won't just off the burnet, alright, man. Lay here, Elmo James, Justice Broome, and B.B. King, he was talking his stuff by 6:16. And I heard him say, "Hmmmm." Hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night. I ain't got much to say, but, uh, well, I guess we talk till you gonna know something about it too. Now, whenever you see M.T. Murphy and Jody Williams together, you know we're gonna hear some blues. Now, they were two great gunfighters, and they hung out on the west side of Chicago in a little place called San Saba, 63rd and Carter's Grove. Now, these guys, I tell you, man, they, now, they was alright. They played the kind of blues that made guys walk in looking quiet and saying, "Hmmmm." It's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night. Now, everybody was there, man, you can't believe it, man, Elmo James, Dust My Broome, Haulin', Smoke Stack, Lightning Whoop, just off the burnet, man, I'll tell you something on it. Buddy Guy, man on the west side of Chicago, Junior Will, Little Walter, Snooker Pryor, Jimmy Rogan, Jimmy Reed, Little Junior Potter. Next time you see me, things won't ever not be the same. You see, look here, I'm telling you some heavy stuff, man. Hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night tonight, it's gonna be a hell of a night. You know, man, old M.T. Murphy and Jody Williams, man, whenever they played a six string, boy, I tell you, that ain't all the guitar they could dress except me. Now, my name is Roy Gang, digging, I'm from Texas.
I'll let you catch your breath for a sec here, but I'll call the study session into order. It is Tuesday, November 3rd. Dave, are you ready to roll?
Rolling.
Okay, thanks. And, um, please call the roll, please, please, okay, yeah, just call the roll.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Atkins?
Here.
So, um, this is an opportunity for Assemblymember Thurman to give us a legislative briefing. You wanna come on up and?
Public comment?
Oh, thank you. Is there any public comment?
I'd like to welcome the Assemblymember to Emeryville. It's been a little while, I haven't seen you since election night, and so we're looking forward to hearing your report. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, and to staff, and to the residents of Emeryville, and to former Councilmember Bukowski. It's an honor to be here. I think it's been since 2005 or so, when we worked together to establish what is now the Tom Bates Sports Park, that I've been before your City Council, and it was an honor to be before you then, when I was on the Richmond City Council, and to establish what became a five-city JPA for the benefit of all of our citizens in this area. But I do have to say, I get to come back on Sundays to be at Head Over Heels with my nine-year-old, who participates in what is probably one of the greatest gymnastics programs in the region. And we just had lunch just outside this building on Sunday after gymnastics, and I just want to congratulate you on one of the many things that is happening in your city and attracting people to a fabulous city that I'm honored to represent. I look forward to having a dialogue with you about what we can be doing for you in Sacramento. That's, that's my, my pleasure to serve this great city. Every day, I take the train to the Capitol and come back so I can run away from the Capitol to stay in the district and be focused on the needs of our constituents and be close to family. But it allows me to stay grounded in what's important in our community, and to read bills, and, and take emails and calls that I hear from our constituents and to hear the concerns. Year one has been a good year, and we're looking forward to returning in January and working on new bills. You know, we led with a number of bills, including a bill to ban chewing tobacco in Major League Baseball in California, in the five stadiums in California, and that bill has been signed by the governor. The reason we led with that bill is because every year, 500,000 young people try chewing tobacco for the first time. And many of you know that there is a connection between the use of chewing tobacco and oral cancer and other forms of cancer. So from a youth prevention and public health standpoint, we move forward on that bill. We do have a beautiful area that we live in, in the Bay Area, but we know we're often impacted by a number of environmental challenges. And for that reason, I carried a bill to focus on monitoring methane and methane emission in our area, and that bill has also been signed by the governor. From there, we moved on to co-author a bill with the Senate President Pro Tem, Kevin De Leon, on SB 350, to help move us more towards renewables and away from too much reliance on petroleum. I was honored to co-author that bill that has also been signed by the governor. I was honored to sign, or to co-author a bill to address healthcare issues for undocumented residents, and particularly their children, SB 4, and I was honored to, to work on that bill. My first year in the Assembly gave me the opportunity to chair a budget subcommittee, and I chaired the Budget Subcommittee on Health and Human Services. In that context, we led with a number of issues related to how we can properly fund Medi-Cal for our most vulnerable residents who are without medical insurance. I also authored a bill to increase the state's portion of SSI and SSP for our aging Californians who we know are struggling financially. Our lead bill was called AB 1014, and it's an education bill that is now a two-year bill that focuses on an issue that's a big issue in our state, chronic absenteeism of very young children. We have a crisis in California where many students miss more than 10% of school, and these are kids who are in the grades from kindergarten through third grade. What that means is that these are young people who don't learn to read by third grade, and sadly, they're more likely to drop out and be pushed into the criminal justice system. We know that places a toll on their lives and on our society, so we've made AB 1014 our top bill to help school districts like Emeryville Unified, or Berkeley, or Oakland, or Richmond, or any district in the state that is addressing absenteeism issues. The other education bill that we carried this year is AB 1025, and that's a bill that provides school-based mental health dollars, and it will allow school districts like Emeryville to work with the county to draw down on more Medi-Cal dollars to provide direct mental health services in the school, to support students who've been impacted by trauma, or who've been in foster care, who've been abused and neglected, or who just need support to allow them to be able to learn and to remove any barriers that they might be experiencing. We are currently in the interim recess for the Assembly, and we'll be back in formal session in January. I've used this time to take on meetings and to start to prepare for the bills we'd like to introduce in January. We've held already one town hall, and we intend to hold two more town halls that we hope will lead up into specific bills that we will introduce in January. The first bill was an environmental town hall that we held last week, in which we talked about how do we engage communities and residents in the conversation about environmental justice, and to ensure that the conversation about environmental justice includes low-income people and people of color, those who are most impacted by the environmental hazards. We also used that town hall to support work we're doing directly with the governor's office to identify candidates who would serve on the Air Resources Board, to make sure that the Air Resources Board has local candidates, has candidates who come from communities of color and from low-income communities, to be the voices for those who are concerned about environmental justice. Our next town hall is this week, and it's focused on education. We're asking all of our school districts, it's on this Thursday, it's in Richmond, at Lavania Dejean Middle School at 6:00 PM. That town hall is an opportunity for the Emeryville School District, for Berkeley, for Richmond, for Oakland, for any district that we serve, to talk about what are the challenges that you're experiencing as it relates to student achievement, to talk about what your experiences have been as it relates to local control funding formula, and where are there gaps? Where do you need assistance? And how can we work together, both regionally, with the many school districts that we have in the Assembly District and the 15th District, but what can we do in Sacramento to provide support to our districts here in the Bay and to districts throughout the state? And then our final town hall is next week, on next Thursday. We're convening a town hall at the State Building in Oakland, at 16th and Clay Streets, and the subject of that town hall is how do we address the affordable housing crisis? And in particular, I'm introducing a bill, or a number of bills, that will address the issue specifically of workforce housing. We've supported a number of measures for low-income housing, we'll continue to do that, but what we're finding is that most of our cities are struggling to provide housing that's affordable for renters, for homeowners, for people who travel far distances for work, and that we're seeing a crisis throughout our state, that the people who live in our communities or who work in our communities are unable to live in our communities. We see the connection to that to the achievement gap. If we have teachers who have starting salaries that make $35,000 a year, how will they live in the community if they can't afford to buy a home? How, you have some great companies here in Emeryville, and we know that it's important to any business or company to have access to a great workforce. And if not having workers who can live near where they work, we know is a threat to the success of the business community and of the education community. And for that reason, we have convened this town hall. We hope that the City of Emeryville will participate. We'd like to hear your ideas and your concerns about the, about the lack of affordable housing, and what opportunities you see for us to be helpful to you in that respect. So again, as I said, I'd love for this to be a dialogue. We'd love to hear what questions you might have, what suggestions you might have, whether you can participate in the town hall formally or not. We'd love to hear your ideas on how to address the lack of affordability in the Bay Area. We think that, as all of our cities are so close together, I imagine that Emeryville has been impacted by what we're seeing in Oakland, by what we're seeing in Berkeley, by what we're seeing in Richmond, that those who are the most low-income are being pushed out and displaced, and that even those who have a decent job and earn a decent living as a working family, or a middle-class person, a teacher, a police officer, a firefighter, cannot afford to live in the communities that they serve. We hope that our bill will rectify that. So with that framing, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to present to you. I look forward to hearing any questions that you might have, or feedback, or suggestions that you might have for us that we can do on behalf of the City of Emeryville.
All right. Well, I'll lead off, and not on a sub, a subject that we've played phone tag about and, but haven't had a full, fully vetted decent conversation, so...
When you say lead off, I thought that was in reference to our chewing tobacco bill in Major League Baseball?
Yeah.
It's a coincidence.
Right, right. So, as you know, before you got elected to the Assembly, the state legislature voted to eliminate redevelopment agencies and to cut our budget in half, and we are not the city we used to be because of that. There are many things that are constrained. Our capital improvement program is severely impacted, and in particular, we were disturbed in the last session about a bill that would kind of change the rules of the game pertaining to re, to the dissolution, and what successor agencies could do. And so, since this is a dialogue, I just wanted to elucidate the points that we found problematic. It's a little bit like water under the bridge, but you could help Emeryville by protecting the rules of the game in the future so that we can dispose of the assets we need to dispose of, keep what, keep what is ours. And part of the issue specifically is there's a limit, SB 107 exempts the Department of Finance from the provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act, which is a negative for cities and successor agencies because it eliminates due process that we don't have, that we used to be able to have under the rules of the, of the dissolution. And so for them to unilaterally make a decision and say that's the end of the discussion, you know, you may be aware, we've been winning some issues around dissolution in court, so to remove the due process and the legal remedies for us is detrimental to the city. So that's one issue that we had with that particular bill. Another is, it, it sounds so little in scope, but we have a 50-space public parking garage that the state wanted us to sell immediately to be able to distribute the proceeds of the sale of this structured parking garage to the various taxing entities. And now SB 107 allows a successor agency to retain a parking garage as a governmental use so long as the income received doesn't exceed reasonable maintenance costs. Well, we have free parking, so there's no revenue generated by this parking lot, parking space. We've been able to hang on to that, but again, the legislation doesn't talk about what's considered reasonable maintenance costs. So that's another issue that actually was, impacted us directly because of this 50-space garage that's in podium parking underneath a housing project that we have. It's located on Hollis and 65th. And the main, so the main thing, I think that's my issue, and perhaps our city attorney has other things to say too, but, but is just taking out, taking out the process, the due process, taking out the ability for us to go to court to argue why certain obligations or assets we should be able to hang on to, to fulfill some public purpose that we've been able to ascertain before the, before February of 2012, when, when redevelopment was eliminated. There's another issue too, around the repayment of prior city and RDA loans, and, which is that SB 107 limits the maximum amount of loan repayments under reimbursable agreements between a redevelopment agency and a city. That limits $5 million, even if the loans exceeded $5 million. So again, that hurts every successor agency in every city who had a redevelopment agency in the state. So there are these factors pertaining to dissolution that continue to be detrimental to Emeryville.
I'd be happy to address those in the course of more than one conversation. I think you addressed a number of complex items, and, you know, Brandon Beranko from my staff is here, and we're happy to work with you, and your team, and to monitor as the dissolution process and conversation continues. Needless to say, the raw, the loss of redevelopment was a huge loss for everyone in the state, including Emeryville. You know, it happened prior to my arrival on the, on the legislature, I was quite unhappy about it, you know, because as a City Councilmember in Richmond, we depended on redevelopment to do affordable housing and to support economic development. And our cities have been stripped of that tool, and have not, quite frankly, been replaced. That tool has not been replaced, and there have been a lot of bills that look at successor strategies, but the reality is, is that we still are seeing the impact and the loss that our cities have experienced. And that's one of the reasons why we're leading with the affordable housing conversation. We recognize that our cities need tools to promote both affordable housing and economic development, and job creation, and packages to support local businesses that will support our jobs, and we're committed to working on that. You know, I can say that while we haven't had a chance to discuss all of the details that you raised tonight, we spent many meetings advocating on behalf of the City of Emeryville while the city was in dispute with the governor's office, with the Department of Finance, advocating directly in the governor's office, and advocating directly in the Speaker's office and in leadership to look for the best ways to support the City of Emeryville. We're committed to continuing to do that. You know, SB 107 is a bill that, you know, there's never a good one-size-fits-all, and SB 107 tried to find ways to address dissolution in a way that addresses the needs of many cities in our state. And quite frankly, I think every city lost something, even in what followed with SB 107. So we know the conversation is not done. We're committed to continuing to work with you and your team, and your lobby group in Sacramento, to see how we can support the City of Emeryville going forward.
Any other council members have, yeah, Diane?
Yeah, briefly, Assemblymember Thurman, thank you for your work, and congratulations on your, your victories this past session. I was sorry to not be able to make your environmental town hall, and I was hoping you might be able to elaborate on what you heard from the folks who did attend, what you're hearing from the community, what that leads you to believe needs to be done. I'm sure you're hearing a lot from folks who don't want coal being shipped on our rail lines and being, you know, going through Oakland, and right here through Emeryville as well, so I, I'm curious how, how that town hall shaped your thoughts on the bills you're gonna bring forward next session.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Martinez. We've talked a great deal about, about coal, because we live in this beautiful area with so much railway, and the idea of uncovered coal traveling through any of our cities is one that concerns me. And I spent a lot of time talking about particulate matter. We talked about that in the, in the town hall. We talked about those who, who simply deny the impacts of climate change in our communities, and, and question the science of climate change. And on the night that we voted for SB 350, I, I had not intended to speak, I was just gonna vote for it as a co-author, and people got up and, and said that climate change was a myth. And, and really, I said to them, what I had to say in the town hall, that I represent the communities that are most closely impacted. When the local refinery in Richmond had their fire two to three years ago, you know, I could watch the fire burn from my kitchen window. And, you know, as a person with asthma, I know that there are many in our communities who are deeply impacted by environmental challenges that come from industry, that come from freeway, and we've gotta do everything that we can to stand the tide of climate change. And that was what our conversation has been. How do we become good stewards of the environment? And how do we break up this conversation that environmental justice and economic development are mutually exclusive? I reject that notion. And people came to the state and said, "Yeah, we care about the environment, but what about the jobs?" And we said, "Well, no job should kill you." And we care about jobs too, and there, you know, I, when I was on the City Council, I helped to start a job training program that's focused on solar panel installation. We think that there are ways to build and to construct and to support our economy that actually have a benefit environmentally and economically. And those are the kind of measures that we'll be pushing for in the next year when we unveil our bill package on the environment, to, to separate that conversation. The opponents of SB 350 said things like, "If you pass a bill that places heavier emphasis on renewables, that there will be gas rationing," and that's just not true. There was nothing about SB 350 that suggested gas rationing. It simply said that we need to find ways to use alternative forms of energy that will have less impact, and the conversation about coal is very much a part of that. We've used the town hall to start vetting candidates whose names we can submit directly to the governor's office to be appointed to the Air Resources Board. Some of the arguments that came up in opposition to 350 were the Air Resources Board doesn't have enough diversity, and that's true, but that's not a reason to vote against a bill that will protect people from environmental hazards. People said that we shouldn't have voted for SB 350 because it was gonna raise prices for low-income people. And while there might be some nominal costs, my question was, what is the public health cost if we don't protect individuals who are in the first line of defense and who are most impacted by environmental hazards? So we use the town hall to educate the citizens who came about how we can advocate, and how we can engage people who live in the communities who are impacted by environmental injustices to be present when we have these meetings, so that when legislators say things like, "I'm not gonna vote for this because the Air Resources Board has too much control, but yet you're gonna vote to make sure that your people are hurt by environmental hazards," that those legislators can be held accountable to their constituents, because we all want clean air, we all want clean water. Low-income folks want that, everybody wants that. But our legislators are often voting for things that are not even good for their constituents. And so, we're gonna continue the conversation about coal, even from the standpoint of how we move products by rail. And one of the, one of the bills that I had an opportunity to support was a simple bill that could have complex effects if it didn't pass, and that is that every train that moves through our communities has to have at least two conductors onboard. There was a bill brought forward that said that there should be, for cost savings, it should be permissible for only one person to be conducting that train. What if that person has a health emergency? What if there are some other circumstance where that person is not able to conduct that train, and it is an industrial train carrying dangerous contaminants through our community? It is an invitation for derailment. And so we use these conversations to shape some of the bills that we hope to bring forward, and our, our priority is gonna be the same, environmental protection in a way that we think can be commingled with economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have been looking at our city for greenhouse gas reduction, and we have a lot of commercial power use in Emeryville, and we have a lot of biotech whose roofs are filled with all kinds of equipment for the biotech industry. Adjoining these biotech facilities are often warehouses of an older type that have empty roofs that could easily support solar panels. roofs that could easily support solar panels to feed the real heavy daytime use of power that these biotech facilities need. But the PUC has informed me that this parcel-to-parcel generation of solar power is currently against the rules. And what I see as an opportunity to have some legislation that would sort of get PG&E out of the picture, partly because all that this legislation would do is allow for the power to be transferred without going on the grid. So in other words, the adjoining parcels could literally string a wire, underground a transmission, or if right next door, just, you know, literally have power go building to building. And not having a grid charge because there'd be no grid use, but at the same time, there's no effect. There's no using, putting power back into the grid. So there's no argument about it affecting the grid. And it just seems like a natural piece of legislation that would not impact PG&E for their legitimate needs to carry power to all these different sources. It's just nothing to do with them. It's just allowing this commercial parcel-to-parcel transfer of power that would do nothing more than clean up our environment. There'd be more solar actively generating power.
You know, it's interesting, I was smiling as you were giving the example because you said it's a natural and it should be easy. And I've found that even the thing you think is a slam dunk in the Capitol becomes not a slam dunk, right?
Yeah.
But it's the right question. California should be a leader on the conversations of energy and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And later this year, the governor and others will be in Paris, you know, having the conversation in the climate summit about how we move forward. And while 350 didn't go as far as I'd like it to, I think it's a start in the right direction to move us to alternative forms of energy. And, you know, Councilmember Donahue, your question reminds me of something that relates to Councilmember Martinez's question, that in our town hall, a lot of our conversation was about how do we more strategically allocate the cap and trade dollars to offset greenhouse gas emissions and better allocate those dollars so that they're being spent in the communities that are directly impacted by environmental hazard. And so we intend to look at legislative opportunities there. We think that your idea is a good one. We certainly would love to look at. I'm guessing you've got a framework for a bill for us right there at the dais. We'd be happy to take a look at that and to collaborate with you and the city of Emeryville and our regional partners on these subjects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis.
Tony, I want to thank you for coming tonight. You're following along in the path that you started in your first year. And you are one politician who promised to communicate on a regular basis with your constituency, and you're certainly doing that. And I appreciate it. The city appreciates it. Your email information is outstanding. I'd like to chime in and say that I fully support Mayor Atkins' remarks on the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies and the real difficulties we've been having with the governor's office and with the Department of Finance. We have got to get this straightened away, and we're looking to you for your assistance. So I want to emphasize that I fully support the mayor on this. The other thing I want to say is that I am absolutely enthralled by the work that you have done in the arena of education with AB 1014 and AB 1025. This is a city that has one of the highest incidences of college degrees in the state of California. They absolutely support public education. And so we want to work with you to see that more of these assistances to the public education system continues. So with that, thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate it.
I want to say, oh, did you have a response?
Well, just thank you to the vice mayor and thank you for following us on our email and our Facebook and our tweets. And, you know, we try to-
Great job.
We try to get the word out about what we're doing because people ask me all the time, what's it like being in this job? And I tell them every day, I feel like I get to make a difference. And we want people to know what we're working on. And, you know, we did a, we did an online survey to ask people what they thought about the needs of affordable housing. And within just a few days, we had over 200 responses of individuals who've reached out and giving us their suggestions. And so I say that to say that we want to keep this dialogue going. We understand that is our pleasure to work for you. And we think that if we get it right in the 15th Assembly District, we can get it right for the rest of the state.
Well, I have to say, unlike many politicians who left the local scene, you have not disappeared into Sacramento. You're here and you're present every day, and we appreciate it.
Well, I still live here, and my kids go to school here, and you all know where I live. So if I don't get it right-
That's right.
-I might show up at my home. So, you know, we're neighbors, and this is a great place to represent, and I'm looking forward to the partnership. And again, your advocates in Sacramento have been in our office quite a bit, and we talk regularly. Nicolau De Luca is in our, people think he's on our staff. He's in our office so much, your advocate.
That's good, that's good.
And he does inform us when you have concerns. But we want to make sure that we do this regularly and that we work offline to make sure that we've addressed the housing dissolution issues, the environmental issues, the greenhouse gas emission issues, education issues, whatever they might be for the city of Emeryville.
Tony, getting back just briefly to the housing, the redevelopment law was one of the biggest generators of affordable housing in the state of California. This city is a prime example of that. I hope when you address your housing consortium, that you emphasize that we have got to find something of that magnitude to replace the funds for affordable housing.
I think you just dropped the mic, and I just want to say I like to, you know, associate myself with the comments of my distinguished colleague.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Tony. Getting back to the budget subcommittee that you chaired, that begins to touch on my day job. So I was pleased to hear about the SSI, SSP increases. And I was just wondering what you knew about the expanded Medicaul, Magi Medicaul. And we're entering, I think, our third year since the Affordable Care Act and since the federal challenge to embrace this. And what's the state going to do when the feds pull out their money?
You know, in addition to serving on the Budget Subcommittee for Health and Human Services, I also serve on the Health Committee, the Education Committee, the Labor Committee, and the overall Budget Committee. And we've had extensive conversation about Medicaul on a number, for a number of reasons. One, one of the major hospitals and emergency rooms in our area closed this year because 90% of the people they serve are Medicaul, Medicare, no insurance. That's Doctors Medical Center in the San Pablo-Richmond area. We tried everything we could to keep that hospital open. And when we couldn't, because I was able to chair the committee, we were able to get money directly from the general fund to replace many of those services to be provided around the clock to citizens who, there are five cities that, you know, need that hospital and that emergency room. And we were able to convene a health task force that allowed us to look at how to bring back that hospital in the future. We even got commitments from Kaiser to serve non-Kaiser members in their emergency room. We're coupling all the health providers. But the one issue that the state still is grappling with is we have to pass an MCO tax to properly fund Medicaul and to increase Medicaul reimbursement rates. California, I believe, is still, has the lowest reimbursement rate for Medicaul. And even though we enrolled 3 million new people in California in Medicaul, the waiting time for individuals who are looking for a doctor or a dentist has grown extensively. And so we've got work to do. The legislature needs to pass revenue streams to properly fund Medicaul and services for the development of the disabled. And so these are some of the issues that I've taken up, both as chair of the Subcommittee and as a member of the Health Committee. We are still in a special session that is considering generating new revenue for Medicaul, for services for folks with developmental disabilities, and transportation. Three key priorities that we have to address in the special session.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments? Well, we appreciate your work and your advocacy in Sacramento. And unlike others who've gone from local office to the state legislature, you are true to your roots, and we do appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity and looking forward to our continued work together.
Great, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll adjourn the study session. And we have a few minutes before the successor agency begins.
And Chair Atkins.
Here. So I have speaker cards that people so kindly filled out before. I'm going to use them for the city council meeting, which will be about two minutes after the successor agency meeting goes. However, if anybody would like to come up under public comment now, under the successor agency, please do so.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to talk about the Emery round and the election. I've been trying to verify the results of the election, and I'm unable to get the information to be able to do that. I requested a list of the property owners and how they voted, and the city says they don't have that. Okay. Well, I don't know how you could not have a list, because how could you determine the results? If you don't add up the sum total of all the parcels that voted for and against, you don't have the results. So finally, I was given a copy of a DVD which has images of all the ballots that were cast. And so I've been going through the DVD. It took me a whole week, I went through most of it, and posted the results to a spreadsheet. But the DVD has numerous duplicates of the images of the same ballots. I mean, that makes the work much harder, and that's really unacceptable. If you're going to have duplicate ballots, then you only should have one duplicate ballot, not numerous ballots. There's parcels there that say numerous parcel numbers with no parcel number, just the amount of the assessment. And then I look at the list certifying the results of the election. How does this company self-certify the results in their own process? I mean, a certification would have to come from some outside source. So I found a city in Colorado that has had a lot of difficulty with TrueBallot and the way they do the things. And I called the guy who certified the election to ask him why he would provide duplicate images. And when I asked the question, he got angry and he hung up on me. He says, I can't talk to you, you're not the client. So, I mean, I think there needs to be some accountability here. The certification letter says that ballots will return for improperly being addressed. Well, sometimes those addresses are clerical mistakes. It might say 150, Park Avenue, instead of 1500. So what happens with that ballot? Is it just rejected? Does somebody make the corrections? So anyway, I'd like to have the council request a copy of the results of the election by parcel number, the same way it's been provided in the past. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I often frequent the senior center. And what I gather over there is that there has been a great injustice to the neighborhood ever since the activation of the senior center. There is no parking for the senior. And some senior, because of whatever the way they drive, they kill two parking spaces. So the neighbors there are very upset. And we have over $2 million construction modification in the senior center, and there is no provision for parking. And this is very unfair. You know, you have to take into consideration the neighbors, those who put up with the lack of parking, not only on weekends, but all day, all week. And they, some leave their car there, they forget. And then after that, those who, like myself, who came there to volunteer, they get tickets. And when I complained to the ticket lady, she said, that car doesn't get a ticket, while me and not her. So she said, well, she lives here. So that was it. So that's the legal excuse. When you live there, you can park, you don't get tickets over there. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment for the successor agency?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
I second.
All right. And without exception, that's approved. There are no further action items, and so I will adjourn the successor agency and move to the city council. to the city council. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Before we get to public comment, we actually have a special order of the day, and our HR director's coming up to talk about it.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, Ian Appleyard, Human Resources Director. I come before you four times a year with the Employee of the Quarter program. And this is a program where coworkers can nominate each other for this recognition and acknowledgement of good work and great service. And this evening, we have Kim Burrows, who is the recipient. So I'm going to ask Kim to come up here. And also join us Pedro Jimenez, the Director of Community Services Department. And then Mayor, I believe you have something to read for Kim.
All right.
That's for you.
Thank you.
Welcome, come on up. On behalf of the city council, staff and residents of Emeryville, I'm proud to award Kim Burrows the Employee of the Quarter Award for the third quarter of 2015. Kim started her career with the city of Emeryville as a program coordinator in the Community Services Department on July 8th, 2013. She is responsible for coordinating programs at the senior center. According to her nominator, perhaps the secret nominator, I don't know, Kim always strives to provide excellent customer service and make sure that every senior leaves the building with a smile on his or her face. She is known for her excellent programming, which includes the Laguna Beach trip and the well-attended Oktoberfest event featuring authentic German cuisine, traditional games, and a live polka band. She works collaboratively with all staff and contributes ideas to events and programs for the senior center, the Community Services Department, and the city as a whole. She has worked tirelessly to ensure service continuity during the remodeling of the senior center. As part of this employee recognition award, Kim receives an award plaque, which you just got, and a gift certificate to an Emeryville resident of her choice. She'll also have her picture prominently displayed at City Hall and lunch with the city manager and department head. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some, this is time for public comment, and we do have some non-agenda items that I'll call these people up, and then anybody else who didn't fill out a card is free to speak as well. Mary Farrell first, Richard Ambro, and Bobby Lee.
I thought I had addressed an agenda item.
Say again?
I thought I was addressing.
Which agenda item is that, Richard?
I was, 6.6 is one of the items, and the other is a 10 dot 1 dash 1 C.
Well, all the six items are part of the consent calendar, so you can speak to them now.
Sure, go ahead, then I'll.
Yeah, yeah, come on up. Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, I'm Mary Farrell. I'm with Council on Aging. And last time, I did mention that our seniors are losing their apartments because of the increased rent, the raises in the rents. And I hope that that can be something that will be on your agenda soon, because we don't want, I know that you're looking for affordable housing for people coming into our community, but we don't want to lose any of our wonderful seniors and have them move out because the rent's so high. I also know that you are working on Airbnb issues for the city of Emeryville, and I want to attest that it's a real problem where I live, and we've been working on it there. And I certainly hope that there'll be some progress in finding some kind of ordinance to deal with temporary subletting here. Thank you.
Great. So I'll clarify, it's time to come, you have a consent calendar item, so it's appropriate to come up now.
Me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Ambro, local archaeologist and historian. And I actually have two things I want to talk about. One is the agreement to have LSA prepare the environmental document for the Sherman Williams parcel. And I wrote a long, detailed email to them advising them as to what I think is important and it needs to do. So hopefully, they will be instructed by the city to read that very carefully, ask questions, I'm available, and take it to heart. And also do reconstruction testing. We had a recent event with, oh, that's terrible, Maurice Morris doing pre-construction testing, and he did, in fact, find the burials. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, is the saving of significant, identifying significant structures in Emeryville. And I would like to call for a landmarks board with teeth to identify and help protect the significant structures, but also, along with that, be aware that there is another category of resource as well, and that's the historic district. And these are, these are structures that, as individuals, aren't really significant, but contribute to the history as a group, so that they're greater than the whole. And there are a number of potential historic districts in Emeryville, and they are under threat from developers. And I live in one of them, so, and they haven't been, they haven't been formally identified and researched, but they should be. And they need to be, you know, considered and for protection as well. So anyway, I didn't attend the recent planning commission meeting where this was apparently discussed, but I should have. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Bobby.
Hi, good evening. All right. All right.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Bobby Lee, and I'm here to express my grave concerns about the AC Transit's proposed plans to reroute a substantial portion of our current TransBay bus service away from Emeryville, in particular, taking the ever-important TransBay F line almost completely out of our city. Currently, the city is served by the CFJ and Z TransBay lines, all of which are peak rush-hour service only, except for the F, which provides an all-day, every 30-minute service. Under the second draft of the Service Expansion Plan released early last month by AC Transit, the TransBay F line will be rerouted away from 40th and Shellmount, and instead, up to 65th and Christie. This would cut service from a very substantial portion of our retail and residential areas of our city. According to the agency's 2012 operations analysis, three of the 10 busiest stops for the F line are within our own city. It's 40th and San Pablo and the two stops around the Bay Street Mall. Back then, there were over 600 passengers that used these three stops together, and that was in 2012, and that number has probably gone up since then. And in other changes, the J line would no longer stop in Emeryville altogether. J and C lines, in particular, function as a reliever service for the crowded bus, F bus line in the morning and in the evenings, or actually, in the mornings. What we have here is AC Transit cutting TransBay service from Emeryville almost entirely. And in the case of the F line, they're doing so to streamline service upstream in Berkeley and providing them with more frequent, every 20-minute service. Said another way, the agency is sacrificing Emeryville service for the sake of better serving Berkeley. Berkeley residents are already served under two speedy options, the bus and BART, whereas for us, that leaves us with virtually no options on getting into San Francisco, not counting the go-around. As you're probably aware, the TransBay service is critical to residents, students, visitors, and workers in our city. They connect us to key housing, job, and shopping areas here and in surrounding cities. You know, ridership has changed since 2012. If these changes are based on a 2012 study, then they're probably out of date. Last year, both the Planning Commission and the council worked on the E-Bots transit study to improve Emeryville, Oakland, and Berkeley transit options. And that was under the assumption that the four TransBay lines would remain the same here in Emeryville. Is AC Transit going to ignore valuable input from this community? As it stands today, the F line is overcrowded, and it needs more frequent service with larger buses through our city. This change is the exact opposite of what we need. And in fact, in the background documents of this new plan, the planners at AC Transit acknowledge this. Mayor Atkins and Councilwoman Davis, you both sit on the liaison committee between the city and AC Transit. What is being done to prevent these changes, or at least mitigate the impact? What tools do you have at your disposal to stop implementation of these poorly thought-out changes?
It's your time.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Thank you. All right, thanks a lot.
All right.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yeah, come on up.
Send me an email with your information. Good evening. My name is Linda, and I'm a neighbor of Andre Carpio. And I would just like to ask a few things and remind us that we're living in a time of quantum evolution, not only in terms of the scientific and the technological advances, but especially as relates to our human consciousness. Every decision that we make either brings us closer to 100% pure light, or it separates us, maybe because of something darker, maybe the place of self-importance, self-motivation, hidden agendas, whatever. To work from the light, we have to think of everyone that's involved and work for the good of everyone that's involved. It's not just about one, two, three, or four people and what they want. It's what can be a gentler and kinder solution. And I see that Andre Carpio in the audience, 81-year-old neighbor and friend of many, is the one who's being hurt. And to put it like it is, he's being devastated here. His home has been his heart, his place of creativity, invention, his study, his regeneration, his sacred space. It may look like a piece of junk. It does. But nonetheless, it's his private space. And because it's not appealing to neat freaks or better homes and garden types, they want to destroy and take it away? Well, what about instead making room for improvement? How about using some grant money or, you know, some help to bring back the original redwood timber that built that house in the 1920s? This is one of the preservation things that you wouldn't know, looking because it's covered with junk. Let's get rid of the junk and bring back the beauty. One of the neighbors, the Smiths, at 1275 Ocean Avenue, asked me to stand for them by letting you know that they are appalled by the cold, mean injustice of taking down this 81-year-old fellow who deserves to live a peaceful life as an old man. We don't know how much longer he has. Let's let him live in peace. And my last note here says, "You'll all be old one day." We'll all be old. We're all getting older. Do we want to experience the devastation that we're imparting upon this man? And you have to wear this on your heart, whatever you decide. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there a city manager's report?
Madam Mayor, not this evening, thank you.
Okay, move the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay. Nobody's anticipating anything? Anybody want to speak to any item on the consent calendar? All right, we'll all be counted I for the consent calendar. We do have a public hearing tonight, and...
Mayor Atkins, could I ask you to ask the audience, how many people are here to speak to the Trader Vic?
Oh, there's quite a few speaker cards about this.
Could we just see a show of hands? Who's here for the Trader Vic issue? No, who's putting up two hands back there?
This one.
Is there any chance we could move that up?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, you'd like that before the noise ordinance waiver.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to get a show of hands? Yeah. How many, how many people are here for the noise ordinance waiver?
We've got some students here.
So there's a lot of people for that item. Some of them are younger.
Much younger.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, so I think we will go ahead with the, with the public hearing first, so that families can get back to their homes. So Charlie and Maru. Thank you.
Maru will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins, council members. This is a noise waiver for the ECCL project. The Turner Construction Company is requesting to do weekend work on ECCL located at 4550 San Pablo Avenue. And the request is for all Saturdays, starting this Saturday till the December 26th of this year. And the proposed working hours during the Saturday is from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. The type of work that they hope to do on the Saturdays is site grading and concrete operations, some exterior plaster work, and interior floor and drywall operations in the gym building. In terms of noise generators, what is going to create noise is the structural work, there's going to be some power tools, and, you know, there would be workers on-site, and they would be talking with each other, presumably. The reason for the request is to accelerate the completion of the gym building and allow the scheduled usage of the gym by the community and the school. Time was lost in doing roof replacement, which was not anticipated but had to be done as they started working on the building. And there were also delays regarding the site utilities installation, which often is beyond the contractors, say, with the PG&E having their own schedules. The school district needs to resume their sports programs. They have not had a home court since the 2011-12 basketball season. In addition, the district has historically, in the past, used the senior center for school functions and fundraisers. And as you know, the senior center is being renovated and will not be available for use, and there is no equivalent large space for, you know, fundraising and other school functions in the city. Our city Community Services Department has suspended all youth and adult sports programs since fall of 2012, and this is the only public basketball gym in the city. And the work would be for the gym building. In terms of conditions of approval, that if you were to approve this noise waiver, the work will be limited to the time and the location and the hours and the type, as described in the request and in the staff report. Back beepers to be disabled during Saturday work, signs will be posted. The applicant will notify neighbors within 300 feet, including the police and the public works and the fire department, before starting Saturday work. If any complaints are received, work is to stop until the issue is resolved. And the council has always the right to revoke conditions if they're not complied with or if complaints are not satisfactorily resolved. This request and that the fact that you are holding this hearing, a notification was sent out to property owners and residents within 300 feet of the site, and as well as a newspaper, as well as an advertisement in the newspaper was put in. So that concludes my presentation, and our recommendation is that you allow the weekend work on Saturdays from November 7th to December 26th, within the hours of 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. We do have John Baker here, as well as the school superintendent, if you have any questions from them, or if you have any questions from me.
All right, thanks. So before I open up the public comment for, the public hearing for public comment, if there's a school representative or would like to come forward to say something about this, this would be an opportunity to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. John Rubio, Superintendent. John Rubio, Superintendent, Emory Unified School District. I just wanted to say that I think our interests, as we understand from staff at the city as well, is that we get our gym up and running as soon as possible. And certainly, some students felt the need to come to our last school board meeting, and they wanted to come here as well when they found out that this issue was coming to you. So our interests, I think, are in common on this one. We really like to get the children and the family and students back into the gym as soon as we can. So we appreciate you looking at this. Thank you.
Thanks. With that, I'll open the public hearing. And so this is an opportunity for any member of the public to come forward and speak for against what's before us tonight. So if the students, the USD, want to come forward, anybody else? I'll give you guys a first crack at coming forward if you want to say something. Okay. Anybody else wanting to speak?
I want to say something. I want to clarify something about noise here. People who complain about noise, they think that individuals make the noise. That's not true. This is the machinery. If you have to make a complaint about noise, you have to address that to the manufacturer of those equipment, of those compressors, and all those accessories that makes noise. I also want to remind the people that the noise intensity decreases with the square of the distance. So you have to take into consideration that whatever you hear is on a square of the person who's handling the machine. So if the person who is handling the machine has 64 dB, then time that distance, and so it will only come to 14 dB. So this is very simple. The people who make issue about the noise, I think they are misguided, and not only by ignorance, but by prejudice against the working man, because the working man is ultimately the victim of the noise. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this?
Hello. I'm Leslie Curland. I live on 53rd Street, so right across the heart of the construction. Am I allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, we may or may not respond, but we might respond offline.
Okay, that's fine. So I just, I guess this is for the developer, so if you're doing work on Saturdays up until December 26th, is the gym going to be available, like the 27th of December? Or, I guess, how quickly does that accelerate the timing of the gym development, is my question?
You don't speak from your seat. Come on up, because we broadcast, so you have to speak in front of a mic. But actually, just procedurally, you have three minutes. So if you have other questions, just get them all out.
Okay. And then my other question for maybe superintendent, students, and you guys...
You just face us when you...
Does anyone, can I see it, like a show of hands for those that live within 300 feet?
I don't know who got noticed who's here. Okay.
So I just, my point is that I'm against this, because I have to live in the construction zone Monday through Friday, and it starts at 7:00 a.m., which is before I get up for work, and then I have a full day of work. So it's pretty disruptive to me, because I live right across the street. So those are my two cents. I'm against it. And I think the other issue for me is just that it's impacted my life in terms of parking. So I often don't have a parking spot when I'm coming home from work. The construction workers are parking in our spots. And also, we've lost a row of, a street side of parking, because the street's been blocked off for the construction. So those are my two cents. Thank you.
Who else? You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Beth Calvert. I live on San Pablo Avenue, directly across the street from the project site. And you may have received my email that I sent you, but I just wanted to come forward in person also. And so the last time I was here was about a year ago, when the contractor and the school district first requested a waiver to the noise ordinance, a waiver for the entire duration of the project. And the city council ruled no, and we greatly appreciate and still thank you for that. Even though you did that, I just wanted to make the point that we have still been subject to noise. And in my email, I described that twice, once for about a week, and another time for about three weeks, because of the site utilities issue, a temporary trench plate was put in San Pablo Avenue. And every time a car, or bus, or truck drove over it, made a really clattering noise and vibrated our buildings, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So that was very disruptive. So that being said, what else did I want to say? Oh, yeah, also, there's been some liberties taken with the 7:00 a.m. backup beeper. You know, five minutes here, 10 minutes there, but still, that's irritating. And a lot of dust coming our way. So the neighborhood has been impacted. That being said, I know it's important to the school district, and the students, and the city to get the project done. So, I mean, ideally, you would vote against it, but in the spirit of compromise, I would suggest a couple of conditions of approval. And one of them is that the Saturdays after Thanksgiving and Christmas get taken off, because Thanksgiving and Christmas are just times that people look forward to all year long, to rest and relax with family and friends. And to have construction on those Saturdays would be very disruptive and disrespectful. And then the other condition of approval would be if you move forward with it, and on the remaining six Saturdays, I would suggest that construction doesn't start until at least like 10:00 a.m. So those would be my suggestions, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. You can go ahead and line up after the speaker, so you could just be in line.
Hi, Council. My name's Susan Scott, and I live right next to Beth. And she pretty much said everything that, I just want to reiterate everything she said, especially about the two Saturdays after the two holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, kind of sacred days. And again, you know, it's, I also want to put out there that I think there's at least four of us on that, right on San Pablo, right across from the construction, that work during the day. We don't just go away, you know, and leave all day and not have to hear it, but many of us do work there. So, you know, the Saturday in addition is going to be a lot to take. But a compromise will at least be helpful. Thanks.
Hi. Hi, I'm Adonis Prince. A student of Emory, I've attended NEH since the first grade, and I am currently a senior. I'm not fully aware of the ideal plan as to when this gym will be prepared for us, but I think it would be unfair to prolong the situation further than the date that was given. I think it was December 27th or something. For one, we were forced to be in an elementary school, and with the passion that I have for basketball, I was willing to stay within high school and with my peers. And so we had the gym freshman year. After that, we were told we would be in there junior year. That didn't happen. Then we were told we would have it our senior year, and that obviously hasn't happened yet. And so we've obviously been promised multiple things that haven't been fulfilled as of now. I feel as if our team has held up our bargain, our end of the bargain. We, as a whole, have averaged a 3.5 GPA, I believe. With us not having our gym, it would make our education a little bit harder to continuously proceed, with us having to move to multiple gyms, being practicing later, not being able to attend study hall or get tutoring as needed to continue maintaining this GPA that we've had. And that's all.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Amanda Seifer, and I live on 53rd Street. Obviously, I'm pretty impacted by the noise. I don't mind it too much. I mean, it's kind of a pain, but I think the sooner that it can finish, like, the happier we'll all be. I would be a fan of starting at 9:00 or 10:00 a.m. on Saturday instead of 8:00 a.m.
Hello. Hello, my name is Chris Edwards, and like my teammate, I have been in the district since kindergarten. And to follow up on everything he said, we have been put in a, you know, a bad situation by being promised the gym for so long and not receiving it. And plus, being in an elementary school has really stifled the actual high school feeling. So not having our gym to actually play the games in, you know, has been a little shaky. And on top of that, maintaining a GPA. So we've held up our end of the bargain, and we feel like a couple Saturdays, you know, a couple of the residents sacrificing a couple Saturdays is nothing compared to the two years we've had to sacrifice not having the home gym, having to play mostly all of our games on the road, with the exception of two out of the past two years. And we feel as if the couple Saturdays, it doesn't do any, you know, justice to what we went through for the past two years. So we just ask you to take that all into consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak before I close the public hearing?
Hi, my name is Corey Cronius. I'm the varsity basketball coach at Emory Secondary School. I used to teach in the southern section, teach statistics out there in Southern California before I moved to the Bay Area. I have been the varsity basketball coach here at Emory for two months. This is, when I started, I worked with Pedro as well, and we were planning, and we planned a practice calendar and a joint use agreement where we were going to have agreements to practice and work with the city on different projects. This has been delayed till December 23rd, I was told, I guess, by the construction company. So we've had to move approximately 15 games out of our gym from November to December to accommodate for the boys' and girls' team. That has cost the school district a lot of money as far as on our end, because we're spending about $3,600 to $5,200 each program for the boys' varsity team and the girls' varsity team to practice at different facilities. We're also having to work around other agreements that are in these facilities at Popular and Bushrod. So currently tomorrow, I'll start basketball practice at 6:00. We will get out at 7:30. That is not ideal for, especially in this area, when the kids get out of school at 2:30. So that's a long wait to stay around, and then to have to come back for basketball practice at 6:00 is a little unfair. And then to have to travel, especially with this being an El Nino winter, will be a really big hardship. I do agree with the residents, however, that the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas, the Saturday, maybe a consent would be something they might want to consider on that end. I do completely understand where the residents are coming from, but I am asking the city to at least proceed with the six Saturdays to allow us to have the opportunity to have a home game. Our seniors have not played in the gym, and to be deprived of opportunity even for homecoming, the school district has to shell out a lot of money to be deprived of opportunity for a real homecoming, to have games in your gym, and to have rallies and those type of things. I don't think anyone here has experienced that, and it's really depriving them of the quality senior year that they all deserve. They are very good students here at Emory. I am fortunate enough to coach a team with a 3.5 GPA with nine seniors, and all of them were eligible by the A through G requirements to go to a Cal State or a UC. So I hope you guys consider that going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? I'm going to call Mr. Baker up, because there are some questions that maybe you could
Good evening. To answer the one person's question about when the gym would open, Turner Construction has agreed with this plan of these Saturdays to complete, achieve substantial completion on the 23rd of December. Substantial completion is when the Division of the State Architects signs off for occupancy. The reason we'd asked for the one Saturday after the 23rd was during that time, we'll do what's called punchless work to kind of finish up things that maybe aren't quite done yet. So they wanted to finish all that punchless work by the actual end of the year. But that's what Turner Construction has agreed to the 23rd. We likely won't be impacted by rain days, because most of the work is inside, although some of the work described is outside. And again, the primary reason for this is we had to reconstruct the entire roof, which was not known until we took the old roof off, and also some coordination with PG&E to do work on the street. So the work being requested is limited to sidewalk work, some exterior stucco work to finish up the walls, and then people coming and going inside the building, which will be less impactful, but just really limited to those tasks. What Turner's wanted to do, in good faith, is knowing that there may be some small amounts of noise for this work, did want to come forth and request the noise waiver, although the noise that we're talking about impacts will be much less than you'll see in a typical day at the job site, because it's limited only to those tasks at the gym building.
Okay, thanks. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and move on to council deliberation.
Mayor Atkins, I'd like to hear directly from someone from Turner Construction.
Anybody from Turner here? No.
No one from Turner has come? They have come into this community and asked for weekend work, and no one from Turner shows up? What's Mr. Baker say about this, as he's the liaison here?
In discussions with city staff and district staff, the plan was for us to bring forth a plan. It's something that we also put together with Turner. We work with them every day in terms of schedule, and so we felt we could represent the request to the city this evening.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about, thank you, Mr. Baker, feels about this, but I think it's entirely inappropriate. We're hearing through an intermediary, direct questions that we have, when this gym will be open. We don't have the actual company that's on the hook for it. And I'm very uncomfortable with that, and I wanted to express my opinion. I realize how important it is to get the gym open. I realize how many difficulties we have struggled with this project, which is a monumental project for this city. But there is a process here, and there is a respect due to this community. And I think it's very unfortunate that Turner, someone from Turner directly is not here.
This is an unfortunate circumstance that we're hearing about this request, but what I find unfortunate is that we're being painted a picture that it's the students of Emory versus the residents. And I really think, once this project is done and we can be finished with construction, it will be for the entire community. And so I don't appreciate that that's the picture being painted for us. What I do hear is that folks, at least in the neighborhood, are willing to compromise. I hope that's what I was hearing, in the interest of getting things done. So I'd love to discuss with my colleagues something along the lines of what Beth and Susan have recommended in terms of not doing construction on the days after Thanksgiving and Christmas, and starting later than 8:00, because, you know, on Saturdays, for those of us who are undrusted, that is the time to catch up. So that's, I would propose, you know, as a compromise, if this would be acceptable to everyone, a start time of 9:00 a.m.
I could support that.
Yes, and on those days, but losing the two days that we discussed after Thanksgiving and Christmas.
So I don't know if you'd accept this as a friendly amendment to your modifying this request, but I would be okay with those holiday weekends if it was only interior work and no exterior work at that point in time.
That would be fine.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. Also, I really would want to be assured that it really is just the gym work that's happening. It's not the rest of the site. Isn't that correct, Mr. Baker? That these...
That these items that are going to be causing the noise really relate directly to opening of the gym?
That is correct. It's just the gym only.
So, I know it's not our budget. I'll just, I'll second your proposal here for modifying the request. And I just want to say, too, that we are so joined at the hip with the school district in the fact that time is money for them. And to be spending money, that we could help kind of put an end to that part a little bit sooner in terms of the extra costs they've had to find to play elsewhere. You know, I think taxpayers would appreciate us trying to be as efficient and to stop the financial bleeding as much as possible, too. So, we have a proposal. I've seconded it.
Could you restate that, Diane?
Yes, so work should be allowed on Saturdays between November 7th and 26th, excepting, oh, I guess it wouldn't be the 26th, it's because we would cut out the Saturday after
No, no, only for interior.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going through the dates first.
Okay, okay.
We would exclude the Saturday after Thanksgiving and the Saturday after Christmas, which is December 26th. Work would begin at 9:00 a.m. I think, in good faith, we should allow it to continue till 6:00 p.m. In the interest of what Mayor Atkin pointed out, that we need to get this work done in order to save us days and limit the work to interior work.
On the Saturday after Thanksgiving and Saturday after Christmas?
Okay, I think I misunderstood what you were saying. So you were saying, limit the...
The holiday weekends, just to limp, that they could work, but they could only do interior work because that would confine the noise.
That's a friendly amendment. I'd support that.
Okay, I, I think in theory, that works well. But when you do interior work, there are still people coming to the site. There are still, I've been hearing from our constituents that they do hear the folks before 7:00 a.m. They do hear construction before 7:00 a.m. They hear noises that they shouldn't be hearing at that time. And I think that it's just a slippery slope to allow construction on those days that are, you know, we're hearing from the folks in that neighborhood that they need that time.
Diane, have any of your consistent constituents called the number to complain or called the city to complain? Because they can shut the site down if there's a complaint. So there is a recourse there to that. I would support Ruth on the inside work on the holiday weekends, on the holiday Saturdays.
I will go along with this, but I want to express to our public, please call that number if there's anything that you hear that is disturbing your peace on those holiday weekends. So, yes, okay. So to restate one more time, we would be allowing work on all Saturdays between November 7th and December 26th. The Saturdays after Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays are to be interior work only, beginning 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
All right, please call, I see a thumbs up, that's nice. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Donahue?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
And Mayor Atkin?
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming, and especially for the school community. I know this is foreign turf for you, so appreciate you coming out, so, and speaking. Everybody to speak their minds.
Mayor Atkin, I would request support from the council that we have a, someone directly from Turner Construction come to this council and give us their version of when, you know, we're going to see these final conclusions, when the thing is going to be built. We got 20-plus million bucks in this, and so far, we've just received second-hand information. I want to hear from Turner Construction.
I'm with you, Nora, and this isn't the last time that we're going to be asked for a noise waiver, is my feeling. And I would like to hear from Turner as well.
And I would like to say to staff, I know you all worked in good faith, both the school staff and the city staff, but don't try to save the council from the brutal face-to-face with contractors or developers. We're used to that. We'd rather have direct information from those responsible.
I think the superintendent wants to say something here about that.
I think we'd be glad to have Turner come. I think maybe the best forum for it would be our joint meeting. I think, I know we have one coming up this week, I think, but that might be the best forum for it. But I just also wanted to remind the council that when we have Swinerton come up, they're actually coming up representing the city and the school district. So that was a joint request from city staff and district staff. And that's why we had Swinerton do it, because we were coming to you as partners. And I know it's a little odd to be coming back to a partner when you're representing a partner, but just to, if you don't mind me politely reminding you that when Swinerton represents both entities in our partnership, the city and the district, and so that is the reason we have them tonight and not Turner. But we'd be glad to have Turner come at a joint meeting, if you like.
I don't buy it. But thank you anyhow.
Okay, this takes us to item, thank you all again, and you're free to go on with your evening. This takes us to 8.1, which is an urgency interim ordinance. And I was going to give the staff report.
Madam Mayor, I'll be giving the report.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Guena, City Attorney. For your consideration, tonight is an urgency interim ordinance, which establishes a moratorium on the issuance of an annual cabaret or dance hall license. If the city council wishes to adopt the interim ordinance as an urgency measure, you must make certain findings, which I'll go over later on in my report, and adopt the ordinance by a four-fifths vote of the council. That's a four-fifths vote of the total membership of the council. Given that there are four council members present tonight, in order for the urgency ordinance to pass tonight, all four members must vote in favor of the ordinance. If adopted, the measure would go into effect immediately, and it would be in effect for 45 days initially. It may be extended for a further period of time, which I'll get into in my report. In terms of background, the reason that this is being considered tonight is in relation to the Trader Vixx restaurant located on the peninsula. Trader Vixx is located adjacent to the Watergate condominiums, and its operations include live music for its patrons. Over the years, residents at the Watergate condominiums have complained about noise impacts as well as traffic impacts to the neighborhood. In 2004, representatives from Watergate and the city met to discuss those concerns and had come to, had come to an agreement about the operations at Watergate. And that agreement was memorialized in an October 2004 letter, which is attached to your staff report. My understanding is that after that meeting and letter had been issued, that complaints from the residents had declined. However, recently, the number of complaints particularly relating to noise at the restaurant has increased. As a result, at the request of Vice Mayor Davis, staff has prepared this urgency interim ordinance, which would prohibit the issuance of a annual cabaret license while the city considers any potential amendments to its regulations regarding noise, the cabaret ordinance, or zoning. In terms of the cabaret ordinance itself, that ordinance is found in chapter five of, excuse me, chapter four of section five of the municipal code. And in summary, a cabaret is currently defined as an event that provides live entertainment at a venue which is generally open to the public. In order to obtain an annual permit, the applicant must provide a series of materials including, and must also obtain a conditional use permit from the city's planning commission. That CUP must address issues including security, lighting, and parking. After a complete application is received, the application is forwarded to the city council with a recommendation from the police chief and the city manager. The city council is then the issuing authority for that annual permit. The permit expires on its, automatically expires on December 31st of each year, and the applicant must reapply for an annual permit if they wish to continue their operations into the new year. The cabaret ordinance was adopted in 1999 and has not been amended since its adoption. So the proposed interim ordinance before you would prohibit the approval or issuance of an annual cabaret license. I want to, I would like to clarify that the interim ordinance does not prohibit the issuance of a single cabaret license, which is issued once a quarter, and that is issued administratively by the police chief. In terms of the authority under which you might adopt an interim ordinance, the government code allows the city council to adopt urgency measures prohibiting any uses that may be in conflict with its zoning or specific or general plans, or any studies that the city council might wish to undertake in relation to its zoning regulations or its general or specific plans. After adoption, after making the requisite findings and adopting the ordinance by a four-fifths vote, the ordinance would be affect, be in effect for 45 days. Thereafter, the interim ordinance could be extended up to two additional times for an additional 10 months and 15 days, and then subsequently after that, for an additional year. Any extension would also require a four-fifths vote of the council, and no more than the two amendments, or two extensions would be adopted. In terms of the finding that you're required to make in order to adopt the ordinance, the council must find that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of the cabaret license would issue, would result in a threat, would result in that threat to the public health, welfare, and safety. In your staff report, I have detailed findings that you might be able to make regarding those threats to public health, welfare, and safety for your consideration. So, in conclusion, in order to adopt the ordinance, the city council must make the finding that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of an annual cabaret license under the current regulations would result in a threat to public health, welfare, and safety. The ordinance would be in effect for 45 days, and at which point it would expire unless, unless extended as described above. So, in addition to consideration of the interim ordinance, we're also asking for any direction you might give in relation to amending the cabaret ordinance itself, amending the noise ordinance, or planning regulations or zoning regulations regarding, you know, where cabarets might be permitted, or if you have any additional findings, any additional findings beyond those that are provided in your staff report. And that's the conclusion of my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for the city attorney?
Mayor, I have some clarifying questions.
Does...
We have public comment first about this?
Clarifying question? We'll ask questions first and then have a public comment.
Does Trader Vixx currently have an annual cabaret license?
No, they do not. And...
Have they ever had one?
To my knowledge, no. And just to clarify, there are currently no cabaret licenses that have, annual cabaret licenses that are issued in the city.
Okay, and none in recent memory?
The most recent one was, we issued was to Kitty's, which is now...
That was a bar.
Prizefighter, thank you. That was at least four years ago, I'm guessing?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Have the police received any applications currently for a cabaret license?
I would look to the police chief.
For an annual?
For any cabaret.
For any kind of, yeah. I believe we do have an application from Trader Vixx.
For an annual license.
For their quarterly work?
For a quarterly, yes. So Trader Vixx had, Trader Vixx had applied for and received a quarterly, a single use, quarterly, single cabaret license back in October, I believe, and that had been issued to them.
Last month.
Last month, last month, yes.
So this proposed interim ordinance, would this prevent any more quarterly applications?
No, no. The, if adopted, this ordinance would not affect any applications for quarterly, quarterly applications. They could still be issued, they could still be applied for, and they could still be issued. And as a reminder, those, the issuing authority is the police chief. That's done administratively. There is no issuance by the city council.
Sorry, one more question. Can you just clarify for the public whether or not a private party at Trader Vixx would be affected by the interim ordinance?
Thank you. No, it would not. A private party, as I had mentioned earlier, our cabaret license currently defines a cabaret as an event where there is live entertainment, and admission to that event is by, is open to the public generally. That is the definition of a cabaret. So therefore, a private party that may have live entertainment, but where admission is only available to invited guests, that does not fall within the definition of a cabaret, and therefore, that event would not require a cabaret license in order to be held. I would note that those private parties, however, would still be subject to other city regulations, zoning, parking issues, and the noise ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a clarifying question for you, Michael. One of the problems with this ordinance, actually, the ordinance itself is pretty well-designed and put forward, but one of the problems is this whole idea of a private party not being subject to these rules. What I'm looking for is language that says, if a private party is held in a commercial space, it is subject to the, to the rules for the cabarets. Is that something that can be done? Because that's the nub of the problem.
Yes, so if the council so directs, we can, staff can certainly propose amendments to the cabaret ordinance, which would expand the definition to include, for example, private private parties.
Private party held in a commercial space.
In the commercial space, yes.
We're going to hear a lot of horror stories from the people who live adjacent to Trader Vixx. And this is a, we've tried to go the friendly way, that, you know, work with them, and nothing changes. Scott and I went down to look at the deck where the music bellows out and gets up into the air. This is a serious problem, and we have to address it. There may be another way, rather than the moratorium, because, I don't know, if you have all looked at this ordinance, we realize it is that one specific definition that is causing the difficulty. Trader Vixx is not responsible, if it's a private party. That doesn't make sense. They're the owners and the people who are profiting from that commercial space. So someone has got to be held accountable to the misery that has been suffered by these people. Sorry for the rant, guys.
That was a little more than a clarifying question. So I think without further ado, I'll open it up for public comment. I've got a bunch of speaker cards. If your name, I'll call up three at a time, and you could just line up behind each other. And then if there's anybody whose name I don't call, and you want to speak, you're welcome to speak, too. So, first is Fran Chupetta, Marilyn Fullrath, and Mary Farrell. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi. We at Watergate, we as Watergate seniors have been reporting to the city council at the public safety, and the public safety meetings about all our negative nerve-wracking and noise ordinance-breaking...
and noise ordinance-breaking experiences with Trader Vic's. But I wanted to share a story with you all, an additional story that was just gut-wrenching for me to hear. A young mother walked by my unit with her 15-month-old daughter, and we got to talking. She told me she lives at 4 Anchor, in a corner with, that was the closest to Trader Vic's, directly above the foul-smelling garbage bins. I asked her if the noise bothered her at all. She told me that in just one night alone, the music and screaming drunks woke her daughter up five times. Her daughter was crying uncontrollably and was frightened. The mother went down to Trader Vic's five times and asked them to turn down the volume, of course, to no avail. How can this be allowed to continue? Just know, there are many more stories like this happening to people who are too afraid to call the police, or they don't even know that they have the option to do so. I am truly disgusted with this situation, and vow to fight to see that Trader Vic's is not allowed to continue this despicable behavior toward their neighbors. Oh, P.S., Trader Vic's, have you thought about hiring a competent chef so you can return to your former glory of being a great restaurant? It might solve all of our problems instead of having to deal with all this bullpucky.
Well, I also live at Watergate. I'm Marilyn Fullrath, and I agree that we would like to see a moratorium. It's one thing to live next door to a popular restaurant, and it's something else to live next door to a lousy, loud dive that spills its drunks and its loud music out onto the water, right under your window. You talk about danger to our health. How about the Bill of Rights? I've always been impressed with that, because it says you have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And the pursuit of happiness is legally defined as the right to pursue your rights as long as you stay within the law, and you do not infringe on someone else's rights. So, our former good neighbor wants to expand and infringe on our rights to come home to peace and quiet. And there is none, and you wouldn't believe it unless you listen to it. It drives you crazy. So, we ask for a moratorium to save our sanity, and give us the right to live in peace and quiet in our homes. And I appreciate your taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Farrell, and I live in 5 Admiral at Watergate. And I want to digress from my prepared speech to say, regarding safety, the drunks from Trader Vic's collapse on the lawns outside, they lie on the grass, they scream foul words, they come inside our garages and urinate, because it's too much trouble to walk back in, or maybe they finally closed it. Okay. I support the moratorium, but it's the noise from the parties on the deck that is unacceptable and harmful. It interferes with our quality of life and our ability to sleep. I've gotten headaches, and I've had to go to bed because of the noise. This has been a problem for years, and it is getting worse. Since I have recently retired and am home more, the, the problem is more than ever. Parties are often twice a day out there, starting before noon, and they're drunk by 12, and they're yelling and screaming, and I'm not exaggerating when I say screaming. They're screaming. Keep in mind that Trader Vic's is still a restaurant. It was never intended to be a nightclub, and they're taking over the deck out there. Did they get planning permission from the city to do that? There's a bar out there. Very short time, they're drunk and screaming. What city allows an outdoor party venue right next to people's homes? When we have called Trader Vic's and asked for help from employees and the management, we have been ignored for years. I've gone down in person many times. I've called many times. I wrote a report in Yelp, doesn't do any good. Our only recourse is to call the police over and over to enforce noise ordinances. Please change the noise ordinance to make it enforceable at all hours for loud parties. Let's make Trader Vic's take their drunken parties inside, and change the ordinance to allow ticketing and severe consequences for violations that are all hours of the day. Please, the noise is making us ill, and I'm not exaggerating, and we love the police department. They're fabulous. And I've left copies of my talk, if anybody needs one.
So, next is Amy Blozenheim, Lee Shapiro, and Joe Lutz.
Hi, my name is Amy Blozenheim. I cohabitate with my partner, Lee Shapiro.
We're engaged.
I work, and he's retired. We spend a lot of time at home when I come home from work, and we like to relax and enjoy our time together. And oftentimes, when Trader Vic's is having one of their parties, I go, oh no, here they go again. So what we have to do is close the sliding glass door, turn up the TV, and watch something way too loud, just to drown them out. And what I don't understand is how such a wonderful restaurant that has such a great reputation, that's a landmark of the city of Emeryville, could deteriorate to such a level such as that, and something needs to be done. Thank you.
My name is Lee J. Shapiro, and I'm a homeowner at 8 Admiral Drive, Unit 241 at Watergate condominiums. It's commonly called the complex, Watergate Complex. My condo is almost 500 feet from Trader Vic's. I'm, I virtually can look down at Trader Vic's, and, and I can see people up there, but the worst thing is the hearing. I can, it's a common occurrence for noise to disrupt my evenings. I mean, it's like their people are in, in my house. They're, they're yelling and screaming, and after a hard day, when I, when sleep becomes so important, just to have that kind of noise, and yelling, and screaming, and people cursing, I mean, it's not, it's, it's amazing. There are animal sounds coming out, that I can hear conversation sometimes, they're so loud. And the people are drunk, you can tell they're drunk. As the night progresses, the, the noise gets more boisterous, so, until, so early in the morning, you, you're probably so upset by being woken up, or being awake. I bought my condo for the serene bayfront setting. That's what I loved about it, and that's why I plan on living there for the rest of my life. And I'm going to turn this page in a second.
Let me do it.
On nights when there's an outdoor party of Trader Vic's, I am forced to close my windows, which I've already told you that. I don't think that people are having a good time, but not at my, I don't want, I don't want, I do feel people can have a good time, and that's fine, but not at my expense.
Joe Lutz of Watergate, Madam Mayor, City Council staff. Trader Vic's, when it opened in the early '70s, was a restaurant and a bar, still is. And when it did open, the planning and zoning documents never contemplated a cabaret or nightclub or anything else, because we had nightclubs around the peninsula and everywhere else. So, Trader Vic's was never built, it doesn't have the sound mitigations, doesn't have the site or anything for a nightclub or a cabaret. Actually, the problem started probably in the mid-'80s. Until that time, it was operating wonderfully as a great restaurant and bar, standing room only. Then they started, they created a deck out of whole cloth there, and added a bar, and then they added music, so by the early '90s, they were a nightclub. And all hell broke loose at for then. So, it was really a cycle of noise, and we'd get on them and have the police go over, and they'd stop for a little while, and then it'd come on, and come on, and come on, to such a point where the 2004, 2004 letter that Michael mentioned, finally, that was the straw that broke the camel's back. Now, I've heard rumor that Trader Vic says, hey, you know, this is going to impact our bottom line if we don't have a cabaret. Well, they're the ones who decided to go away from their core competency and engage in activities that are harmful to the environment. It's sort of like the, the child that shoots his parents, and then goes to the judge and wants leniency, because he's an orphan. It's ridiculous. It's absurd. So, the things that I think need to be done, as Nora pointed out, that you need to get the private parties on commercial property, particularly when they are a selling point, they're sold as part of the, the process, that needs to be done. Additionally, the condom, that the fact that they're wanting a cabaret license is an expansion of use, which would require conditions from the planning commission, which I think should be relatively strong in terms of that. But the process, the application process needs revamping, as we know, but we should take a look at, is it appropriate to have a cabaret next to one of the largest residential areas in the state? And when I say next to, within 20 or 30 feet of a bunch of residents, this is ridiculous. The other thing that needs to be done is the noise ordinance. I, I looked at that, and I'm chagrined to see that it's, it's ambiguous. Excessive and annoying noises come under Section B, which sort of implies that it's codified in ours. It shouldn't be. The noise ordinance was for typical urban noises, and excessive annoying noises shouldn't be. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Come on up. With or without a speaker card, it's okay. You can, you can line up behind Mr. Karpia.
I think that before the council made any decision, pro and con, we would have to go through the technical process of the physics of sound. And for this year, we would have to have a recorder that will register the decibel emitting from Trader Vic and the decibel emitting from the train that pass in railroad track here, many, many, many times during the day and the night, and those trains make much, much more noise than the music you can hear at Trader Vic. So, that's my point. The second point I want to hear, there is a psychological workout here. I remember when I first moved in Emeryville, I was a piano player, and I played soft music, Chopin, Tchaikovsky, and the neighbor complained, and she said that when I was playing, her TV went funny. And, and she said the TV was going funny also when I was using the torch, which is nonsense. But this is ignorance, and this is the, the product of ignorance, and we have emotion mixed to that, and those people, they come here, and they speak very well, they have their thing all the way down, well-written, and all they do is to hurt the business of Trader Vic. They want to shut it down, and they don't want people in Trader Vic to earn a livelihood, and this is bad. You don't allow this kind of thing. This is racketeering. These people are uppity. These people are those who collect the rent, who goes under by being poor, and that's all they have to do. They collect, they count their money. They don't work. They don't have to work to make a livelihood. Thank you.
Come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'm Keir Fulmer from Trader Vic's, Vice President. I just wanted to say, on our side of this, because we've seen all of the emails going back and forth, that we have been in business in, in the Bay, we're an institution in the Bay Area, and we're not just a restaurant. This is our 81st year in business. We're a fine dining establishment. We are in no way a nightclub, never intended to be, never, never would be. We're being compared to the likes of Silk's and Kimball's East. That's not who we are. As far as drunks on the lawn at noon, we have, we open at 11:30. I'm not even sure how that could occur. But, basically, on our side of everything, where this moratorium is coming into play is at the busiest time of our year, where we have the most, where we generate the most revenue. And we have worked as hard as we possibly could with all of the Watergate residents, with Mr. Lutz. Every time that we've gotten an email, I've responded myself within an hour, even if I'm traveling, and I have somebody in the restaurant get back to him, if I can't myself. We have gone beyond the noise ordinance of the city of Emeryville. We've closed the deck an hour earlier than we're required to. We have had our vendor deliveries come in an hour later than we're required to, trying to accommodate our neighbors. We've done everything we know how to do to be good neighbors, and this, I have letters from August from Watergate residents thanking us for the hard work that we've done, and for, you know, responding as quickly as we have and making the huge difference that we have. So, this all started with one buffet on a Sunday when we're normally closed, and there was drumming for two hours. We absolutely opened in 1971, or 1972 when we opened, we had three private dining rooms. Those were always live music, but, so, the 99 cabaret license was way after we opened. But those, those private dining rooms were opened with the intention of, of weddings and receptions and anniversaries, and it's a huge restaurant. That's, I mean, that's what we do there. So, it would absolutely impact our revenue. As much as anybody's saying it wouldn't, it absolutely would. That's one of the last places in Emeryville where you can still go and have your wedding on the bay. So, that's just our side of it. We also have, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I ran a report, starting in May, we give a 20% discount to Watergate residents, and May, June, July, August, we gave 570 covers 20% discount. In September and October, we were down 200 covers from our Watergate discounts, because there's a lot of residents that love us, they're just not here. So, we have asked for, for papers to be signed, and I understand that it impacts, and we really do want to work with our neighbors. We're not trying to be difficult. That is not our intention at all. So that's, I just wanted to present our side of it.
We appreciate your coming tonight.
Mayor, council, staff. My name is Nick Sebastian. I live directly above Trader Vic's at 4...
Can you raise your mic?
I live directly above Trader Vic's at 422 4 Anchor. I appreciate what I just heard from Ms. Fulmer regarding her quick responses to communications that we give on some daily, weekly basis. The issue, though, seems to be a breakdown between her attempts, sometimes successful, sometimes not successful, and the operating staff, who she directs to abate the issues that we, we raise. We've tried individual meetings, they don't seem to work. That's why it's very important that the council and staff work with all of us to mitigate those issues in a way that allows them to continue a legitimate business, a legitimate profitable business that many people enjoy, but not at the expense of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of Watergate and Emeryville. Thank you very much.
Hang on a second. Come on up. You've already spoken, Joe, so. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Eber, and I actually own the building, and am their landlord. And Trader Vic's really, if not the first, we're the second owners, so we go back to day one, and I really believe that they are, have been a fabric of this community for many, many years, and I think there are an awful lot of us around who have had family dinners, and birthdays, and anniversaries, and, you know, life events at that restaurant. And it is almost a historical landmark, it's part of the community, and I appreciate the fact that it's very difficult for residents to be next to the, a restaurant. I think that, but I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bathwater, and I think that if there are, if they're not allowed to have private events, and, I mean, the cabaret is really just Hawaiian musicians. I used to take my 94-year-old father, you know, every month to listen to Hawaiian music. He just passed away last year, and we went, you know, every month to listen to these Hawaiian musicians, you know... And we went, you know, every month to listen to these Hawaiian musicians, you know, play at Trader Vic's. And, um, anyway, I hope that we can try and resolve something between the community and the restaurant and try and come up with a solution that maybe isn't quite as extreme and, um, overreaching. And I know that Trader Vic's is trying very, very hard to be good neighbors. Um, I know I have been, I've been the recipient of some of the emails from the residents. Um, and, um, I hope that we can try and come up with some solution that makes everybody happy and that we can continue to have Trader Vic's as part of the community as they have been for so many years, 80, I guess. Thank you.
Anybody that hasn't spoken yet?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Nettles and I'm the general manager of Bay Street. It's a cabaret license. We're looking at doing 100 events a year. And we support the four times a year quarterly licensing. Um, we just recently were approved for our Urban Indie Festival. Thank you. It went very well. And so we just want to make sure that we're not excluded from holding events on Bay Street. We had a wonderful Halloween event that brought hundreds of families. And we just want to make sure the application process doesn't push us into a bubble where we can't do events for the community. That's it.
All right. Well, I see someone who's spoken already who wants to speak again. Is there anybody else who wants to speak a second time? Could raise your hand. All right, Joe.
Thank you very much for this. Um, Ms. Fulmer has been very, very responsive to us and I have mentioned that to her. And I, we think she's the best VP of operations that they've had. However, the issue still is, remains to be the music and the noise on the deck. And it's more than just Hawaiian music by far. It's ridiculously loud. They have rock bands and everything else. And the other thing is you have to remember is that they operated for almost 20 years without music and without a deck. So how they can say that this is, like I said, you can't exercise bad judgment and, and, uh, harmful activities and expect to get money for that. That's just not right. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
We're having round two, so come on up.
It will be short. I would just like to address, uh, Kier Fulmer also, and would suggest that to mitigate everything, hire a good chef. The people of Watergate don't go there anymore because the food is not good. And who wants to pay a lot of money for bad food? So maybe start there. We're all for Trader Vic's being a successful restaurant. Thank you.
All right, we're doing second rounds here.
So that's it now. We switch from noise to food. I mean, you know, what else? I think this is really a sickening misery to the, to the people who are in business. And this is, this is squarely professional bias, you know? People who earn their living other than, than a cabaret or a restaurant. They're not involved in critics like that, you know, the bankers and all those people, all those rich landlords. They're not criticized by the way they do, they push around paperwork and all that, you know? So, I mean, we have to get off of this complaining cycle of people who are working. That's all they do. In order to earn their living, they have to do some work, some noise, some dust, you know, some fume. They have to do, it's, this is part of the friction and of the material that they handle. That's all. So, you know, as I said, when I was playing piano, I could not satisfy the neighbor. I had to move the piano to another room. And then after that, you know, it was bothering her TV, you know? I mean, it's crazy. Thank you.
All right. So I'm, uh, cut off public comment at this point. Um, I have a, I have a question for the police chief. Um, our current noise ordinance says that, um, the police should respond to a citizen complaint when a noise disturbance has been going on for 15 minutes or longer. That would be disturbing to anybody of normal sensitivity. And I, that's a rough paraphrase. So what's been the PD response to noise complaints emanating from the restaurant?
Um, so we have responded when we received a call for service. Um, as I explained in the last public safety meeting, we haven't received an inordinate amount of complaints of noise directly to the police department, but we have been working with the community. Um, when we respond to night, to noise complaints, we try to mitigate it and have, and make a request for them to stop if there's a violation. Um, the noise has to be unreasonable and this is a business. And so, um, at times it's because it is a business and they are allowed to have music. It's difficult for an officer to determine that it's unreasonable if it's not during the prohibited hours of the noise ordinance, which is 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM Monday through Friday and, um, 9:00 PM to seven Saturday, or 8:00 AM Saturday and Sunday. And we have not issued any citations for violation of the noise ordinance that I'm aware of since I've been here.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions for staff amongst the council?
Well, I, I'd just like to say I appreciate that Trader Vic's is an institution, been here a long time. And, uh, nobody wants Trader Vic's to go away. What we do want is the noise to go away. And, uh, it's very disturbing. I know, our new police chief has kind of walked into a firestorm here. But the thing is, it does no good if police respond and take no action because in their judgment, uh, the noise is not excessive for a commercial establishment. This is a commercial establishment right butted up against a residential area. So I think the problem lies not only with the, uh, the cabaret ordinance, but also with the noise ordinance. It's too subjective. We have to be able, when people call with legitimate complaints, whether it's from Watergate or whether it's from 1500 Park, wherever it's from, when the officer goes there, there should be a clear and definitive pattern to follow, uh, so that if the noise is excessive for the neighborhood, you know, and we're talking again about a residential neighborhood, that action, action will be taken. Not just a little tap on the wrist, but turn off the noise or be subjected to a fine. So we aren't, we not only have the cabaret license that we've got to take a look at here, we also have to look at the noise ordinance. And Charlie, we also have to look at the planning and zoning regulations. Uh, you know, there's, there's real, there's an upside to a mixed-use city and there's a downside. This is the downside of a mixed-use city. We, we want to live amicably together with the commercial establishments and the residential. I don't, uh, in consideration of reading, uh, Mr. Geena's very, very good report, I don't believe that the moratorium is going to solve this problem. I think, this is my own personal opinion, I think what we have to do is make a change to the cabaret ordinance, which in essence is a pretty good ordinance. But we have to include in their language that says, private parties that are held in a commercial establishment are subject to the cabaret rules. And that, then we will hold them accountable. That's a different process. It takes a little, uh, might take a little longer, but, uh, we're not faced with the moratorium issue. And right now, a moratorium doesn't affect Trader Vic's because they don't have a, a, a cabaret license and probably will not move forward with their application. But we do have to change that ordinance. We have to change the noise ordinance so that when the police go out in this city, they have an arm to turn down the noise.
Right, right.
And then, and then also planning and zoning. So I would like a suggestion either from Mr. Geena or, uh, the police chief, how we proceed on this. I, I, I have to say, I don't think the moratorium is an exercise that's going to help us. I think the changing of the, of the, uh, cabaret license has to be done and we should put that on a regular agenda for, for the first week in December.
So, um, uh, I'm generally supportive of your, of your comments, Nora. Um, I, and to my Watergate, um, uh, neighbors in town, um, you're touching on something that was near and dear to me in my first term because, uh, and I'll take a little liberty with the mic here, uh, to, to tell my story about noise conflicts. Um, I was a first-time home buyer and I couldn't sleep the first night I put my head down in my condo because AC Transit had their hydraulic tools going to change their tires 24/7. There was a nine-tone employee car alarm that went off for hours at end. And in terms of purchasing a place in Emery Bay Village, I had no idea what I'd gotten myself into. And so, um, this mixed-use idea, so then it's like I got involved with, um, noticing the postcards that the city of Emeryville was sending to everybody because mixed-use, they're definitely compatible and then there are incompatible uses. And to be, to have a residential complex located next to an industrial use was pretty incompatible around noise. So, um, I actually led the, the effort to revamp our noise ordinance. What we had on the books before this one, current one, had to do with peddlers hawking their wares from the street. I mean, it was a little, it was kind of quaint, but kind of beside the point in terms of what we needed. So, um, uh, what, what we're living with now is a first real overhaul of the noise ordinance from that time. And that was around 1999, 2000, something like that, when we brought that to, to council and, uh, had our legal expertise and, and other staff involved in drafting this. So, um, uh, this is a, uh, this has been a very complex issue, but in terms of living compatibly together in an urban area, noise is where most of the conflict happens. So we have to be intelligent about how to, um, address noise conflict in terms of being able to live together in close proximity. Um, 20% of our population lives in Watergate. And, uh, it's a kind of, not the highest density housing that we have, but it's a pretty, it's a medium-density housing. So it affects a lot of people. Uh, so that being said, one of the first changes we have to make in the noise ordinance is about, is to, uh, make sure that the noise ordinance talks about the people who are being adversely impacted. So to have a police officer respond to a noise complaint and say, well, they're just a business. Of course they're going to generate noise, that doesn't cut it. If that's how our police are interpreting the noise ordinance, to say, well, as an establishment, they're allowed to make noise. No, they're not allowed to, uh, engage in, in noise that disrupts sleep and other basic human needs. I, and in terms of the drunken behavior of the patrons emanating from the restaurant, that's a whole other issue. It seems to me that that's a disturbing-the-peace kind of call too, that the police should be responding to, uh, more aggressively than it sounds like they are. So when we look at the redoing the noise ordinance, we have to look about the people who are complaining because they're being adversely impacted, not because it's standard operating procedure for the noise generator. That, the, the onus, the, the onus is put in the wrong place if that's how the police officers are interpreting it. Anybody who complains for a noise that lasts 15 minutes or lo, or longer, that would be objectionable to anybody of, quote, "normal sensitivity," that's a valid complaint. So, um, I, I think there's some reeducation that has to happen with the police department, but we also have to revamp the, the noise ordinance about these conflicts. I guess you want to say something, Chief, here. Yeah. But you're, you're, you're getting me going here on, on something that I've, it's been near and dear to me for decades in this town.
Well, I, if I gave the impression that we're not responding and not taking action, that's incorrect. We are responding within our means to respond. And I think the residents here would agree that when they call, they do get service from the police department. They're all nodding, yes, thank you. Um, so we are serving them within the means that the ordinance and the law allows us to. The officers can't, um, decide, well, today I'm going to enact this law for this group, but not for that group. There's no special, um, privilege that the police have to enact or to enforce a law for one group and not another and decide it's good for here and not there. They have to, um, base their decision on the entire situation and the facts. They haven't issued a citation because it hasn't warranted since I've been here, I can't speak to before, but they have taken action and contacted Trader Vic's and asked for the noise to be lowered or stopped. And Trader Vic's has complied, I think, in almost every situation that we have been involved in. We have not received calls for service about people urinating or lying on the lawn or screaming that I am aware of. If we have, I am confident that the officers have responded to that and taken appropriate action. So my apologies if I led you to believe that we're not taking action. We are. We're taking reasonable action and, and listening to the residents. We've been working with the residents and responding to their issues.
Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, make a few comments about the situation out there. I was recently at an event in the room right adjacent to the deck, the, the deck that seems to generate most of the noise problems. And I went out on the deck and in fact, there is a bar on the deck and I got a drink at the bar on the deck. And I looked up at all the windows and residents looking down at me as I was getting my drink at the deck. And it's kind of remarkable how the proximity of it all is. And I, also I want to say that the design of the bar and the, the back, the L shape that faces away from the wind is lovely if you're on the deck because you're sheltered from the wind. It is such a gorgeous location. However, that same shape, from a sound point of view, projects the sound right to Watergate. And, uh, I think that if Trader Vic's was serious about keeping that unbelievably great deck a viable thing for the future, they, they should invest in a quality sound engineer because a good sound engineer could make that deck usable and dramatically reduce the noise. But it would have to be designed in such a way that it would prevent the sound waves from going to, uh, Watergate. And I think from looking at the situation and being familiar with sound mitigation because of various things in my professional career, I think it could be done. I think that, uh, the, the parties could be compatible, living together. But it would be a serious investment for Trader Vic's. The, the owner of your building there is, would have to really get a sound engineer who knows what they're doing and really look at it. And the city of Emeryville, I think, would be positively predisposed to, uh, any design that would solve that issue. And, you know, the, uh, so I, I think that, you know, we, we would, as a city, love to keep Trader Vic's, but it just seems impossible to keep it the way it is right now for just, they, I can tell it's just hardly any noise in that circumstance amplifies it to the residents. And, uh, it's amazing it's gone on this long from my point of view, just looking at the circumstance. And I, I think we need to look at our cabaret license, not just for Trader Vic's, but citywide. I think it's an important distinction about private party, uh, you know, versus, I think we have to straighten that out. And I think we have to look at our noise ordinance.
I don't have a lot new to add. I, um, there seems to be agreement that a moratorium for an annual cabaret license is not the right tool to, um, affect the noise that, um, we hear is coming from Trader Vic's and really affecting the residents at Watergate. And I agree, we, uh, this is a, a good time to look at our noise ordinance and our cabaret license insofar as it applies to pri- insofar as it applies to private parties. But I want to ask Vice Mayor Davis and Mayor Atkins, who, you know, were in Emeryville in 2004, if the gathering of all parties was helpful, because it seemed to actually have an effect at the time. And maybe Mr. Lutz would be able to speak to this. I invite you up to let me know. If the city were to mediate a meeting between all concerned parties, would this have an effect?
Joe, before you go ahead, Diane, if I could just say, there was a lot of time and effort went into that meeting and the follow-up, and it did cause some changes. However, Trader Vixx is a large corporation. They change management quite regularly, and when management changes, the institutional memory is gone and we're right back at square one. We need to have the tools to control that noise in that location. And this is not just that location, it's citywide. We have residents jammed up against commercial spaces. We've got to look at this seriously. How are we going to control this? So that people can make a living commercially, but people who are living in their homes can have a quality of life. And I strongly support Mayor Atkins and her first noise ordinance.
Yeah, that was my first legislative change here. Yeah.
On the noise ordinance, the idea that you brought up, Mayor Atkins, is that, and the way I thought it was going to be, was that typical urban noises would be codified in certain hours, but excessive noise would not be. And that's a little bit ambiguous, and that's what causes the police to have their issue because they can't, there's not really something defined that they can do.
Okay, all right.
But as far as your question on 2004, actually, what happened was there was very little follow-up and very few, if any, of the agreements were actually kept by Trader Vixx.
Then my comment to that is that I hope Trader Vixx will be very involved in whatever we're looking at, and please, you know, give comment along the way so that we can come to a compromise that is codified in law, that the city can control, but still allows for you to do your business in a reasonable fashion.
All right. So, I think the staff has direction here. It seems as though we don't have a majority to go with a moratorium. We do want to see revisions to the noise ordinance and a reworking of the cabaret license at a future council meeting that applies to private parties.
Mayor Atkins, if possible, could we bring that language? It's going to be a very small paragraph in the ordinance, but it's something that needs to be done and done fairly quickly. Michael, could you get that together for the first meeting in December?
Yes, I can. And to clarify the amendment that you're looking for in the cabaret license, what I'm hearing from the council is that they're looking to amend the cabaret ordinance to include, within the definition of a cabaret, private parties which are held in commercial uses or commercial venues.
That's enough of it.
If there's another way of talking about it without this term of cabaret, of use of amplified music or other kinds of things, then maybe that can be added into the definition under this ordinance?
It's possible. I mean, the idea behind, you know, the discussion tonight was that our current definition of cabaret excludes private parties. And so, in order to require a private party to have a cabaret license, you need to capture them within the definition of what constitutes a cabaret.
The rest of the ordinance is very well done.
So, maybe the term cabaret is a little archaic at this point. So, maybe we could talk about, just kind of in general, more kind of noise-generating events, and particularly in the mixed-use areas or something. I don't know, I mean, this is, or maybe entertainment events or social events or something that just seems a little more modern.
Mayor Atkins, may I ask if there's a distinction to be made between interior and exterior music?
Currently, the definition of a cabaret does not distinguish between whether the event is held indoors or outdoors. So, if the city council direction is to include that distinction, that would be helpful to know. So, to answer your question, a cabaret could be an event that's being held outdoors as well as an event that's held indoors.
Well, you know, we have events in the park. You know, we show movies, we have live bands. I mean, maybe we need to be thinking, they don't get a cabaret license, they just get an event permit.
That's right.
So, those kind of issues need to be, those kind of events aren't that dissimilar because it's amplified music or projecting, in the case of the movies or whatever.
Sure. And is the, so, in drafting some of this, in drafting these amendments to the cabaret license, it would be helpful to know if the will of the council is to make a distinction as to whether or not a cabaret is an event that's held indoors or outdoors.
Right. Well, noise can leak outside. I mean, that's, I mean, something that starts inside can still be disruptive to people outside of the building.
Yeah, the issue is the noise. It's not the inside or the outside. It's the noise that goes across the property line. That's the issue here.
Okay.
You can be inside a building, and if you have a band in there that's amplified up to the kazoo, you're going to have noise outside the building across the property line.
Sure.
Mayor Atkins, there's another issue that we don't want to lose here, and that is we want a plan and a timeline for revising that noise ordinance. And can we get some input from Carolyn, how we can push that forward? This is going to be an increasingly important problem in the city.
My experience with noise ordinances is that they can be quite complex, and so, we will absolutely do all that we can to address this, working with staff, the community development department, the city attorney.
And when can you bring a first draft of suggestions for revises back on that noise ordinance?
Noise ordinance.
So...
This is impacting the people who live in this city.
Sure.
This is a very critical issue.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that this is a priority for the council. However, I'd also like, I don't want to rush this either because I want to make sure that it is capturing some of the issues that I'm hearing from the council and from members of the public, as well as members of your business community as well. So, I'd like to be a little bit more thoughtful about how to approach this. What I would propose to do is at, perhaps at my introduction of the first reading of the cabaret ordinance revision, we can present you also with a timeline of when the noise ordinance amendments could come forward.
Very good.
That's good.
At that point, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I want to thank all the Watergate folks and for Trader Vixx for coming tonight and Bay Street for coming too, because this has larger ramifications for the city. We've got a lot crammed into one square mile, and this really speaks to the heart of like how we're going to be able to live together compatibly. So, thank you, and I think we're done on this subject for this evening. That takes us to item 8.2.
Move Kate Richards.
Second.
All right. Any exception? We have a new member on the bike-ped committee, so thank you. We have no city as housing successor. Department heads, Charlie, we always hear from you.
Yes, I have my monthly report to you on what the planning commission did at their last meeting, which was on October 22nd. They had four items on their agenda. They approved the tentative map for the marketplace project, and they denied a high-rise identification sign for Center Health. Both of those items are appealable to the city council. The deadline for appeals is this coming Friday, and to my knowledge, neither one has been appealed yet. If the council wishes to appeal either of those items to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do that. They also had two other items on the agenda that are not appealable. The preservation of significant structures ordinance, they recommended approval, and that will be coming to you for your consideration at a future meeting, I believe, I think on December 1st. And they also held a study session on a multi-unit residential project at 1225 65th Street, which will at some point be coming back to the commission for consideration of approval. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any other department heads?
Hello. I would just like to talk about two things. One, we just made 25 job offers to firefighters. They're going through background starting today. They will come online in February, do a four-month academy, and will be hopefully online for summertime for our next fire season. We are winding down with this last rainstorm. We are hoping that the wildland season slows down, and we're now prepping for El Nino and all the floods we're going to be having in the county. Also, our firefighters at Station 34, it should be in the E-News on November 14th, are putting on an open house from 10:00 to 2:00 with a barbecue. They would like the public to come by for a barbecue and thanking the city and the city and the people of this community for their support in remodeling that firehouse. So, from 10:00 to 2:00, they will be doing a barbecue and a walk-through of the firehouse, and all are welcome, and bring a friend. The one on Powell Street, I'm sorry, right next to police station.
Are there still hot spots, or did the rains really help extinguish the summer fires?
Well, we didn't have anything major going on when this latest storms came through, so it would have been nice to have it, you know, a couple months ago.
Right. Any other, yeah?
Mayor and council members, I'd like to give you an update on the assistant city attorney position in my office, and I'm pleased to announce that I've made an offer, which has been accepted, for the assistant city attorney position. Her name is Andrea Visfisshara. She's currently the assistant city attorney for the city of Petaluma, was formerly the assistant city attorney for the city of San Luis Obispo. And she'll be joining us on December 1st, which is her first day. So, I will be bringing her to the council to introduce her to you, but I wanted to share that good news with you.
That's great. I know you need the help. You've been deluged.
Thank you.
Any other department head? Council members?
Mayor Atkins, we've all received, I hope we've all received this memo from, or letter, from John Bowers about a small-business forum. And as we know, many of the small businesses in town are really struggling, and we're searching for ways to help them. I think his idea of having a forum for these small-business owners to come forward, get together, talk about what is good here, what is bad, what is needed, that will help us decide how to use a small-business fund if this goes forward. So, do we have the support of the council here to schedule something like that for, say, February or March?
I was going to say early spring.
Early spring.
But when you say forum, is it, I thought he was requesting a study session?
Well, you know, a study session is in the council chambers usually at a city meeting.
Talking to the mic.
At a city meeting. I was thinking more along the lines of perhaps a Saturday meeting, 10:00 to 12:00, something like that, so that they could come in and, you know, have a little refreshment and really feel free, not be constrained by a three-minute time limit to talk, but to really give us the information that we need to form policy in aiding and assisting small businesses. Does that sound reasonable?
That's fine with me, but I think Charlie has some clarification.
I believe Commissioner Bowers was requesting a joint meeting between the planning commission and the city council, although he does say, you know, either that or just a council meeting is okay with him. If it is going to be all of the council members at this forum, though, obviously it would have to be noticed as a special meeting of the city council. So, you're proposing a special meeting of the city council on a Saturday to hear from the business community? Small business community?
With the support of the council. How does everybody feel about asking the planning commissioner members to be present too?
Yeah, it seems excellent.
To me, it speaks more to the need to maybe have an ad hoc task force.
Well, that may come out of that meeting.
Well, we do have the economic development advisory committee, which is...
Maybe it needs to be a subcommittee to work on small-business issues in particular.
Could be.
Yeah. Well, anyway, a Saturday meeting tends to be a little more informal. People can share more easily with less constraints than public comment.
And we should have an agenda prepared to tell them what kind of information we're soliciting from them. What are you going to speak to? What are your ideas here? What's good, bad? What are some positive suggestions to improve the small-business climate?
So, it would be a special meeting of the council, and we would invite the planning commissioners to attend if they wish?
If they wish, yes.
Well, that sounds good.
As opposed to a joint meeting?
What's your suggestion?
Either way. I mean, I have no preference.
I don't either. Leave it up to the mayor.
I don't know.
Well, we have our new bonus point system we're doing a second reading on soon, and...
You just did it.
Yes. Okay, well, we have, one of the components is small-business things that the planning commission really should be involved in this because they're going to be seeing this on the front line, so I think it should be joint city council, planning commission.
I agree with that. I think it should be a joint meeting.
Right.
Good. Well, Mayor Atkins, I'm sorry. Thank you, Nora, for bringing up Commissioner Bowers' request, and I have another request along the same lines. In July, we'll be coming up on the one-year anniversary of implementing our minimum-wage ordinance, and I just would like to request at that time, or beginning at that time, the collection of information in order to present a memo to council to give us an evaluation of how we are doing. You know, I think a year is a good amount of time to at least start presenting that data, and I think, you know, in support of small business, we want to see what effect the ordinance has had on them. And I think with the changes that have been happening in staff, I think it's important to make this request now so that the appropriate data is being collected now, and that continues through July, and we get a really good look at how this has impacted our business climate.
Good idea.
So, we want that information presented to us at the August meeting, then we would have a full year?
I think that would make sense.
That means we can't take August off, guys.
There is no August meeting typically.
Well, we'll have a meeting in August.
I'd be happy with a memo in September.
Oh, okay, September.
September, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.